Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Want to make sure, welcome everyone here. Certainly have a form. Uh, what's your pleasure on the regular, you know, May twenty second? On the minutes, make a motion to approve. Motion's been made at second. Any more discussion? You none, all in favor of the motion making, no, but saying aye.
All right.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. I do not know of any whole business. Do you know of any, Brady?
The E D A re-zoning last, uh, week at the board's meeting, uh, was approved by the board.
All right. I did hear the sawmill had been approved.
And the sawmill as well.
Anyone else have a question for Brady on any whole business? Moving to new business, got your packet. We could go public hearing, but we discussed it earlier, Dutch Gap and Grill LLC. I'd like to change a rezoning. Uh, Brady, you want to speak to that and then we'll come up some questions, then we'll open for public here.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
I'm gonna, yes, Roy.
I'm gonna do a presentation as well here in a second.
So you cannot hear, I'll try speaking up.
Thanks, Roy.
Can y'all hear me now? Okay. Okay. All right, so, uh, this evening, we have a rezoning request before the planning commission, Dutch Gap Gas and Grill. Uh, the applicant is requesting a rezoning from R one residential district to planned community district, P C D for property located on the south side of U S three sixty, it's along Dunn Street, uh, which is state route, uh, one zero zero two. It's identified as tax map thirty one dash one ten and thirty one dash one eleven, uh, of approximately eighteen point eight six acres. This property is, uh, as I mentioned, currently zoned R one residential. And according to the county comprehensive, uh, plans, future land use map, it's located in the village, uh, development area. This rezoning would inherently reduce the lot development, um, regulations. So the R one does permit a subdivision by right as a by right use, meaning it doesn't have to go before the planning commissioner board for approval. Someone would just have to apply to the county, submit a subdivision application to the county, which would then go before various respective agencies for approval. Uh, so that's a by right use in the R one. However, with the lot development regulations that the R one permits, the maximum unit count, uh, for this development would probably be twenty to twenty five units, so it'd be about one point two units an acre, uh, would be about the maximum development count for this property. The applicant is wishing to rezone the property to P C D to access the less restrictive lot development regulations and increase the number of buildable lots. Uh, this P C D requires a minimum lot size of eight thousand square feet versus fifteen thousand square feet in the, um, R one. And another difference is the front setbacks for the P C D are fifteen feet versus sixty five feet. They have submitted a conceptual site plan, which was included in your agenda packet. I also have printed out some copies of a larger detailed submission that shows images of the property and images of the types of houses that they ultimately would like to construct if the rezoning is approved. Um, the initial concept, uh, conceptual site plan shows fifty one single family detached dwelling units, which is approximately two point seven units per acre. Um, I know you all will probably ask, uh, these properties will tie into the water and sewer system. And I spoke with the director of public works, Daryl Goff. He felt that the water and sewer system could safely accommodate an additional fifty one users as, uh, they are about uh, operating at about fifty percent capacity right now. And to me, what he said to me is that, uh, that means, uh, an additional four hundred users could be added at a rate of four thousand gallons a month usage. So, uh, there's still a significant amount of capacity in our system. Um, and he actually mentioned that currently our system is sort of almost in a break even operation, if not in the red, because we still have that much capacity left that's not being accessed by, uh, residents. Um, the line on Dunn Street that runs along Dunn Street is an eight inch line. It has previously been approved by a third party engineer for a project relatively about this size. Um, and then the sewer would flow from this project across Church Street to the Smacks Creek Pump Station. With, of course, uh, as any project, if the rezoning happened to be approved by the board of supervisors, I know tonight you guys are just reviewing to make a recommendation. All federal, state and local codes would have to be followed, including zoning, erosion, sediment, stormwater management. And that would have to receive approval from V dot, the Department of Health, uh, D E Q, and of course staff to ensure compliance. I do want to just give you, um, again, some things on the presentation for you to see. The key impacts of the requested change is really as it pertains to the lot development regulations. Um, so the individual is constructing single family detached dwelling units, which of course are permitted in the R one by right. Um, but this will, this request will reduce the lot size requirement from fifteen thousand square feet to eight thousand square feet. And then it would also reduce the setbacks, as you see, the R one, uh, sixty five front, thirty five total for both sides, so you could have a fifteen on one side, twenty on the other. And then thirty five foot rear and the P C D requires a fifteen foot front, fifteen foot side, twenty five foot rear. And as you see, the largest difference, um, is the front. Because that, the R one requires a thirty five foot total for both sides. So it's a fifteen and a twenty or a seventeen and an eighteen. Um, the P C D would allow for fifteen foot sides, which is thirty foot for total side and twenty five foot rear. So that largest decrease or reduction is that front setback of fifteen feet. Um, the P C D does require a ten percent area and planned open space. This open space can include paved areas, lighted areas, utility right away, or any body of water, like a stormwater management pond. It has to be ten percent of the area in actual plant, open usable space, which with the size of this property would be about one point eight eight six acres, so just under two acres of planned open space would be required. These are the subject parcels, as you see right off Dunn Street. Um, the red area that is crossed through, um, was the old home place for these parcels. It's, they're no longer on this, uh, that home place has been divided off and is on its own parcel. This is the flood map, so FEMA does not indicate on their flood hazard layer that any flood zone exists in this area. However, the national wetlands inventory does pick up two ponds, so there's two freshwater ponds in the area. This is the, uh, conceptual plan of development that was submitted with the application. And it shows the, uh, an entrance off of Dunn Street, uh, with call, with, uh, two main street areas, uh, three cul-de-sacs total, um, to service the, the, the potential homes. I know another thing you guys, of course, are going to want to know is the traffic impact analysis and the results from that. As you all might remember, this request was submitted in February and was going to be brought before you all in March. Uh, but, uh, when V dot reviewed the conceptual plan of development, they indicated due to the, uh, potential traffic increase or the projected traffic increase, rather, that a traffic impact analysis would be required. So the applicant, uh, sort of temporarily withdrew their application. They, uh, paid a firm, Kenley Horn, to complete this traffic impact analysis. It's since been completed and submitted to V dot and V dot did provide feedback. Um, Adam Wilkerson, uh, representative of V, V dot is here this evening. So he can speak to this more, um, in terms of a traffic engineering perspective, a lot better than I can. I'll just tell you that the traffic impact analysis conducted by their third party consultant recommended adding double yellow centerline pavement markings along Dunn Street, uh, from Five Forks Road to the proposed entrance for the development. There was a ton of, uh, studies and projections that they did related to the traffic, which, um, I think Adam could probably speak to further as he in his office reviewed it. V dot did provide feedback saying that they would recommend adding stop bars, uh, for westbound Dunn Street, uh, as well as, uh, Dunn Street on the other side of Five Forks Road. And, um, instead of a double yellow centerline all the way to the entrance, um, maybe a little bit less, just about a hundred to hundred fifty feet until the road narrows, um, because of the way that W L lines affect the usable road space. So that being said, if you have any questions for me, please feel free. And again, um, Mr. Wilkinson is here, the applicant is also here. Um, Ms. Emily Hazlet is representing them as well as a representative from Kim Lee Horn is here as well. So we have representatives from three different organizations that you, you all are welcome to ask questions to. And then you can ask questions, of course, of me as well.
These will be V, V dot spec roads built to V dot spec.
Yes.
Aren't they supposed to have a second emergency entrance somewhere, exit?
So, uh, for them to be accepted by V dot as a state maintained road, they would have to have a second entrance. They, um, are currently or have been working to determine uh, if they can get a second entrance in, what they could get. They are definitely on board with making sure that there is a, uh, at least a service EMS entrance to access the property. Um, but they are working to see if they can get the width for a second entrance with the property they have. Seeing that they probably could get the width for that entrance and or the actual road area. But then the, as the entrance widens, uh, they are struggling a little bit there with current lot, the way the, uh, lot currently stands.
Any more questions for Brady?
How many acres per unit, how many units per acre do you say it was going to be with fifty?
It's two points, with fifty one units, it'd be two point seven units per acre, um, at eighteen point eight six acres, so two point seven units per acre. So, uh, fit, like, if it was fifty four units, it'd be three units per acre, because eighteen times three is fifty four, so two point seven units per acre roughly. And, uh, the comprehensive plan does indicate in the court, in the village development area that, uh, the county would try to solicit higher density development in that area, um, up to four units an acre for single family housing. So this comes in a little bit less than that comprehensive plan, um, language.
So it's like almost a third of an acre per unit, roughly, yeah.
Now, I will say, that's total area per unit, because you do have to take out your roads and other things in terms of what your actual lot size ends up being. But total, total acre per unit is about a third acre of property per unit that would end up being constructed if the rezoning was approved.
Any questions?
Is, are there proffer statements there, community sidewalks, what do they mean by that?
Sidewalks serving the interior community. So they, um, to my knowledge, and I know the applicant could probably speak to this further. Um, they would intend to construct sidewalks that would, that the community could use internally so that they would not have to walk on the roadway. Um, of course, there's no sidewalks on Dunn Street. However, in our conversations, they have discussed trying to potentially connect to the ones on Five Forks Road, but they would have to gain some sort of right away, uh, you know, right away usage agreement with a property owner to do that.
God damn, that's forty foot right away on Dunn Street, that should be enough room there for sidewalk, yeah.
It would just be, it would just depend on, you know, whether they wanted to put it on, if they wanted to do that. Um, but that's not a part of their proffer this time in terms of onsite, these are onsite proffers. As you all know, well, media county is no longer eligible for cash proffers, you've all learned about that. So they did state, uh, issue a statement with multiple onsite proffers to include the community sidewalks, a pavilion, fire pits for the residents, a patio outside of the pavilion, a raised garden bed area that would be fenced, a storage shed for those gardening tools. And they proffered that it would only be single family detached dwellings as the P C D does, um, have the use access for multifamily duplexes and single family attached. But they proffered, and, um, I have an updated proffer statement here, that was more recent than what you all have in your packet, with them signing, saying they would only, of course, construct single family detached dwellings.
Any other question?
You said we're not eligible for cash proffers, that mean you can't require it anymore?
Well, it's never, you've never been able to require it, it's always been voluntary basis, but in a way, in Virginia, it's really been the cost of doing business. People put cash proffers based on what the county's cash proffer policy had in each respective county. However, we are no longer, we, we're not a designated as a high growth rate county, because our population was less than five percent growth rate over ten years, and we do not abut, um, three high growth rate counties. So we only abut two, Palatan and Chesterfield. So since we, in the latest census data in twenty twenty, by the time it was finalized, we found out late twenty twenty two that we were no longer eligible to receive cash proffers on new conditional rezoning requests. And that will not change until twenty thirty census data comes out, so it'd be twenty thirty one, twenty thirty two.
How much is eighteen acres of woods?
Currently? It's definitely more pasture, I, I've never measured exactly how much is wooded currently. Um, I don't know if the engineer from Kim Lee Horn could speak to that, or if the applicant could speak to that, but I'm not measured exactly, but there's a good amount of pasture land there or grassland. Yeah, I can go back, could you pull that presentation up, please, Ashley?
There's not a whole lot of wood, not really.
Maybe at the, that's.
See, pull it up here. So if you, the two pronounced shapes, you'll see those, that's the shape of the lots, and if you follow that shape, a large amount is open grass area. I mean, it's not technically pasture, because there's no cattle, livestock on it, but it's grass area. Okay, the applicant stated that it should be well less than a third.
I assume the homes in here would be self-ownership, right? It's not like a, um, rental type property.
These would all be, uh, sold to homeowners.
Where is the parking for the houses? You look at the thing, is it on the roadway in front of the house?
So they, the, most of the house plans, and that was in that sort of packet that I printed out. I didn't print out eleven of them, it's so many sheets of paper, um, and it's, yes, uh, but, uh, all the house sort of possibilities are included in there, the different house designs and what the square footage is. Most of them include garages. So I would assume that there is, they're making an assumption that at least one car, we parked in the garage. And then I'm assuming that had a short driveway for the other car, so I do, I do not believe there's going to be any on-street parking. I'm not sure if that would be an H O A requirement, as you know, some communities don't allow on-street parking. That would be up to them and their restrictive D covenants, but at this time, I, I think they made at least room for two vehicles per house. Is that correct, Emily? So, um, Emily representing, um, Dutch Gap Grass and Gas and Grill said that the driveways currently in the plans that have been submitted could hold at least two vehicles and the garages are designed for two vehicles, so the property itself could hold at least four vehicles.
And I'm assuming if, if we would pass this on to the board supervisor, that we would not see the house plan other than the county would take care of that bars.
Could you repeat that, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I said, if this is passed from here going to the board of supervisors, we will not receive anything other than what we saw here as to where the houses would be, just in the lots.
Yes, sir, yeah, they, um, the applicant submitted a conceptual plan of development according to the application requirements. They would have to come back and submit a full subdivision application. And that full subdivision application would then, of course, receive a lot more engineering preparation that would then be reviewed by staff and other respective agencies. So at this time, this is definitely a conceptual plan of development that could change, definitely is, this is the most it could be, though, because the way they got the lots to find are as close, I mean, it's, they can't get any tighter. So it will, regardless upon their submission of their subdivision application, there's no way they can fit more than fifty one units. And as Mr. Easter requested, or, uh, inquired about the roadways, for example, just in adding another roadway, that would probably take away a unit or two. And so certain things will probably end up reducing the unit count before it's finally, before whatever was finally reviewed and approved.
So this would just be max.
This is a max conceptual plan of development, the fifty one units.
And I'm assuming through these that it would be some type of barrier between this property and the property owners on each side.
So the planned community district does, um, have certain intents and purposes with characteristic requirements. Um, one of the characteristic requirements in the planned community district is that they should have, um, open space, uh, and vegetative buffers. So something that they would be required to meet in their subdivision plan is the open space requirements that I had mentioned. Uh, the ten percent requirement of total acreage of total size, so around two acres of open space. And then they would also have to maintain some vegetative buffers, uh, around the houses to satisfy, or throughout the development to satisfy the planned community district, uh, zoning designation.
And I assume they would build in phase, phases, instead of trying to do the whole thing and sell it all after.
It would probably, I'm assuming, be sort of like our other subdivisions, like Maplewood Forest, for example, which is currently being built out, um, where lots are sold and then houses are built as the lots are sold. So it really depend on the market in terms of how fast it's developed.
Anyone else have any question?
See, any required width to the buffer?
In the, in the planned community district, currently as it stands, there's not a stated required width to a vegetative buffer.
Pretty much just a buffer on the lab.
Yep, just vegetative buffers, um, to, the intent of the planned community district is really to create a community within a community. So it's really supposed to be its own community with the open usable space, sidewalks, amenities like the fire pits and pavilions and cooking areas or whatever that would give it its own uh, amenity infrastructure to make it, it's really its own community that the residents could enjoy. So it's, it's not, uh, just built, throwing houses in there. The planned community district is meant to achieve, uh, achieve that type of community identity and sense of place. So that's something that staff would have to really scrutinize and review during the subdivision, uh, application and review process.
So I guess the other question I'll ask might be a dumb one, but in a community like this, who's responsible if somebody does not take care of the house or?
They would have an H O A, they would have to establish a declaration of restrictive covenants in the D language. And then the county would likely, um, you know.
Force that.
Mm-hmm, to be formed, to be formed, because a lot, we do have a lot of subdivisions that did not set up an H O A. They have a direct declaration of restrictive covenants, but did not set one up. And so that's something that, if it's a concern, the applicant would volunteer as a proffer, which I know that they already communicated that they were definitely are going to set up an H O A to monitor because of the issues that would likely present itself if someone didn't care for their property.
Anyone else have questions?
If I, they are planning on doing anything else besides what we see here, like, you know, some of them, luck with the communities, they will have like a swimming pool and all of that kind of stuff, or is any of that?
To my knowledge, no, other than the onsite proffers of the pavilion and sidewalks, patios, fire pits, yep, in the houses. No pools at this time.
Anyone else have questions? I'd like, uh, the highway department to speak first before opening up for public hearing. Would Adam come up? Just kind of give us an update. Appreciate you being here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
That's all, guys. Um, yes, sir, so the applicant's traffic engineer did provide us the, uh, traffic impact analysis report. Uh, our district traffic engineering group reviewed it. They were fully satisfied, they adhered to all the standard methodologies and assumptions we look for in a traffic study. Um, the design year was twenty thirty, when they projected their site traffic onto Dunn Street and to the Five Forks intersection. The level of service was a level of service B, which is very good on a scale of A to F. Um, the one, we had a few just minor comments on the safety inventory assessment, which is really, I think, the, the most important part of these, uh, low volume traffic impact analyses, um, or analyses. Um, and one point I'll make is we are recommending. And one point I'll make is we are recommending they consider putting stop bars on Dunn Street at the Five Forks intersection. And we checked our inventory records for the road width. It was variable on Dunn Street. So we're asking them to verify. We wanted to separate it into the section from Five Forks to Green Street and then from Green Street to their proposed access. If the road width is greater than eighteen feet, then the department can support the double yellow to be extended from Five Forks all the way down to their access. If it's less than that, though, our standards typically don't recommend that sort of treatment. But from what we're seeing, they they did a very good job with the study. We're satisfied with it. We just have those few comments. And I'm happy to address any questions you all may have.
In their study, did they recommend a second entrance?
No, sir. They did not. As you know, our standards require either two two entrances or we will accept a stub out to a. undeveloped property product that could be developed to provide that second street connection. So as it stands now with just a single connection and no stub out, they would not be eligible for state maintenance. However, if they revisit that, we'd be more than happy to review it. And if they comply with our subdivision standards, then we would be willing to accept the roads.
Anybody else have questions, Mr. Wilkerson? I'm sure you'll be here to answer any that. Public may have.
Yes, sir. I'll be happy to stick around to the end.
Thank you. Anybody like to hear anyone else before we open the public hearing? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. Where the applicant requesting an R one to from residential plant community to PCD property located. Come forward, state your name, address, so we can keep it for a record. We do not bite. We would like to hear from anyone and everyone. Pros and cons, just step up, step forward to the mic. That's all we ask. And just state your name and address. Sir.
Dale Grigg, sixteen two oh one Dunn Street. And the reason I raised my hand first is because I'm probably the one who had to travel the farthest and I don't want to get home too late. I just I just want to go on record. The property that I am representing is belongs to my mother. And I'm representing her here tonight. She's not able to be here. And it's been in our family, I think, for about seventy years. And so I'm kind of familiar with Dunn Street, seen it, you know, for a long time. It's a, you know, Dunn Street's a local street. Serves a very mature and somewhat serene neighborhood. The homes on Dunn Street, mostly residential, I'm sure there's a bunch of rentals down there now. It's transitioned over the years that people have aged out. But there's still a lot of folks, you know, single families that live there as well as, you know, rental properties. A lot has been talked about the development and the operation and the functionality of Dunn Street, whether or not it can handle the traffic. And I think the gentleman from VDOT confirmed that the TIA, the Traffic Impact Analysis, did confirm a level of service. Or operational service B, which is good. But that doesn't tell the whole story of whether vehicles can, you know, make turns safely and not queue up and back up too much. Is one thing, but when you talk about adding fifty one homes on what essentially will probably be quarter acre lots, once you deduct the acreage for the roads and the. Open spaces, you're going to be down to about quarter acre lots. You're going to have a fairly high density neighborhood. And I don't know whether or not they still use this as a rule of thumb, but back in the day, I used to work for VDOT. So and I used to do this kind of thing for VDOT. And back in the day, we used to use seven vehicle trips per day for a household. And if you do the math, that's three hundred and fifty cars added to Dunn Street every day. Now, they talked, they did the peak analysis and it was about fifty cars peak in an hour. And I'm sure that's probably representative of people going to work in the morning and people coming home in the afternoon. But and I don't know what kind of. Families are going to live in these houses and whether two people are going to work and how many people are going to be going out every day. But. Three hundred and fifty vehicles a day is probably a pretty, you know, reasonable assumption to make. And the folks from Kimley Horn and VDOT can. Either back that up or refute it, but that used to be what VDOT used to to generate ADT, average daily traffic. Okay, so I want you to just keep that in mind. A lot has been said here about the necessity or the maybe the. The advantage of adding a second point of access. If you did that, it would improve the safety characteristics of the neighborhood access. If one entrance gets blocked for whatever reason, you've got another way in and out. Beyond that, it would serve if it is a. A road, a public road, then it would also serve to ease the impact on Dunn Street proper. The comment has been made about adding the double line on Dunn Street. That was a big red flag for me. It's it's kind of like a double edged sword. In one sense. If you take some of the roadway without by adding the double line, so you're basically narrowing the two lanes. That creates a traffic calming effect. But at the same time, you're also creating the perception of basically. The same kind of operational characteristics that thirty eight or thirty eight or Five Forks. As it it becomes that kind of road, it becomes more of a, not a local road, but a collector road and the. The types of, I guess, driver behavior changes. That double line is there for a reason. It's because they're going to they they expect a higher higher volume of traffic on the road once the subdivision is built out. Beyond that, I don't know if anybody's even the folks from VDOT sooner or later, I'm sure they want to look at Dunn Street and see if it's got the capacity. Structural capacity to carry the traffic that's the generate that the neighborhood is going to generate, especially the construction traffic that the neighborhood is going to generate. During the build out phase. That road, it's probably got an aggregate base of, I don't know how deep it is, but. The the TIA said it was an asphalt surface, but it's a surface treated surface that has recently been slurry sealed. So that the structural capacity of that kind of a pavement is not the same as a plant mix of hot mix asphalt. So. You can check VDOT's records. They should have it in their pavement management inventory, what's what's out there and can be more specific than I can be. Anyway, you know, there's. I I don't really have anything negative to say about the proposed development, other than from my understanding, talking to Brady, it's it's going to be private roads. Financed by an HOA for maintenance. Is that still the case? Do you know for sure?
They if they didn't get state, if the state would accept it, that'd be the only.
Option they have. Okay. Well, my only my comment to that is, and obviously it sounds like we're not there yet. And. But, you know, when the time comes when these roads are built and there needs to be some kind of independent quality assurance. Either for the county and the state's benefit or the HOA's benefit. And I'm sure the the folks are. Going to be managing the development, you know, will have to take that into consideration. Normally, they do some quality control. That's just part and parcel to the road builders requirements. But there should be some independent oversight so that at the end of the day. If it does in fact go in HOA, that that HOA is protected because I've been involved in neighborhoods where they should have been built. According to, you know, standard and because of lack of independent oversight, they weren't and you don't want to be there if that happens. That's not good for anybody, especially the homeowners. So I do appreciate the chance to be here tonight and just. It's it's early in the game. I I get that. So all I'm doing is trying to give you guys some things to think about as you, you know, make your decisions and. Work with the developers to make this the best type of community that, you know, is in. That's compatible with what's out in Dunn Street. Now, this is a fairly high density neighborhood. I get it. They, you know, they're trying to get the highest return on investment for the property that they're they're planning to develop. But. All I ask is that you just look beyond the short term. Don't let short term push out long term in your decision making. Not just for the benefit of the folks that live on Dunn Street now, but also for the folks that will be moving to Amelia and enjoying the village. Thank you very much.
Thank you for speaking. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? State your name and address. Oh, we ask.
Martin Conkle, one six two eleven Church Street. Also, my neighbor lives next door to me, going to make it tonight, but share as much of the same concerns. So this, I'm lucky, it's in my backyard, but not as bad as my neighbors on Dunn Street here. A few things that I just want to point out. Nobody ever came around and talked to me about this or hearing my concerns. I don't did anybody else on Dunn Street that developers ever talked to you or? Come by. Okay, so one. Okay, I guess they left us out on Church Street there. They didn't talk to my neighbor either. But. One of the things I sent Brady a picture and I know everybody says DEQ, DEQ. There is a well developed stream. That comes off that pond, kind of runs along the backside of my property. If you went back to the map and you saw that final cul-de-sac, they only had houses on partial of it. Our property is right here on the other side of that cul-de-sac. The way that looks is, I sent Brady the pictures, the cul-de-sac is pretty much over top of that that stream that's been there for ages. Recently digging around on property, we found bottles and trash in there going back to the turn of the century. So that stream is something that's been there very, very long, but doesn't show on the map that you had. You know, the other thing is just is just buffers and stuff. There's some profers for the community itself. I didn't really hear any kind of considerations whatsoever to the. Existing neighbors. I do think that is important when we do these things. I know. We want to maximize our profits when we develop stuff by maximizing everything we can put on that land. But that's why we have planning committees. That's why we have a board of supervisors to think about. Everybody else involved in this, not just a bottom line. I get developers trying to make their bottom line cool. That's why we have you guys here for. To me, as far as community development goes, should be backyard to backyard if we're going to establish something in this area. And by all means, I want to say on the record, I'm happy that a nice HOA neighborhood is going to go back there. It could be something far worse. I'm fine with that. Just the way it is planned out with that cul-de-sac, pretty much it'll be my house, my backyard, a road. The front of other homes to me should be backyard to backyard. That seems like a little more sensible community planning. And once again, also in consideration, my neighbor next to me there on Church Street. And just I would hope maybe for a little bit of buffer between everything in general. So. You know, I get planned residential community. There's some room for growth in the village, but do we really want to take just a slice of Hampton Park and drop it right in the middle of our village like that's? That's pretty much what this is. So hopefully, as members of our local government, just kind of taking consideration the people that. And landowners that are invested already around it. I'm happy with some nice HOA homes going there. I just think it could be a little better thought out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak?
How are y'all? I'm Mike Smith. And I live sixty seven twenty Bridge Fourth Lane, Mearney County. I've just got some things to mention. As far as the county goes. It looks like to me it's all pretty much leans towards the positive side. There's already going to be development there. They're just talking smaller lots. So. More houses, which will result in more real estate tax for the county. More property tax. It's going to help local businesses for the residents. I hope it'll help local churches. Some of them in the village is especially are struggling. Especially your traditional churches. I know that for a fact. Hopefully it'll create some jobs, you know, whether it be in the service industry or what, but fifty some houses is going to be a lot of people. And businesses could and should pop up. And last thing, I say I don't have a lot to say, but this could very well raise the property values of folks on Dunn Street. You know, a nice development should help things out for people's worth.
Anyone else like to speak? I will not cut it short. If you're willing to speak.
Mr. Chairman, we received a letter, staff did.
Okay.
If you don't mind, I'll read that letter.
Hello, my name is David Keener and I'm a resident of Amelia County located just outside of the Amelia Village. At seventeen one thirty five Amelia Avenue, Amelia Courthouse, Virginia. I'm submitting this email and asking that you share it with the members of the Amelia Planning Commission for the rezoning of the Meadows at Dunn Street project. I would like to express my support for this project and approval of the rezoning. As a longtime resident of the county, I've witnessed a time when the village of Amelia was the hub of business, fellowship and collaboration for the county. Unfortunately, I've also witnessed the loss or relocation of many businesses and related economic activity from the village to the three sixty corridor. The Meadows at Dunn Street development offers to provide a significant boost to the population directly within the village area, convenient to many of the local businesses. I believe that this project could provide a welcome boost to the remaining retail and restaurant businesses located in the village area. And could provide a real opportunity for growth and rejuvenation of the village instead of stagnation or further deterioration in the future. I hope that the planners and developer can work together to approve this project and provide an attractive quality addition to the village of Amelia County. Sincerely, David Keener.
Anyone else like to speak? Or anyone else have a letter that would like to? All right.
I'm Jennifer Lowry. I live at sixteen two three six Dunn Street. My, I like, as has been said, the idea of having a neighborhood back there, it's not. It is a good idea to have provide more housing here in the county. My main concern is the quantity of housing. And when I look out my backyard, I have I have DC tire like right behind me, but I have all these beautiful trees onto over to the right. And if this neighborhood goes in, all those trees are going to be gone. And it would be. A beneficial to have some sort of buffer, like a tree line, something between our houses on Dunn Street and the neighborhood coming in. Because I I moved here from Chesterfield County. I work at the school at the. I moved out here to teach at the school and I could have moved to Magnolia Green or Hampton Park, one of those places. I don't want to live in a place like that. I could have. I wanted to live out here where this where things are more spacious, even though I'm still kind of in a neighborhood on Dunn Street. It's. I like that it's a little more spacious and wider and more trees, et cetera. I know that's not VDOT information, but that's how I'm looking at it. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak?
Raymond Gallagher, sixteen two thirty Dunn Street. I have had a chance to talk with the contractors, a couple of people, particularly this gentleman, looking at this project. The main concern that a lot of us have is that there is a good, sufficient green barrier. This has been mentioned previously. I will mention my personal circumstances. My wife and I have been residing in our home on Dunn Street for fifty and a quarter years. And this is going to be quite a change behind us because we've been used to having total privacy in the backyard. And it also gives me a concern for the people moving into the new neighborhood. They should be able to have privacy in their backyards as well. So I'd just like to stress that a good green barrier that does this for both the existing and new neighborhood. Certainly ought to be given the most consideration. As far as the new neighborhood is coming in, I can see several advantages for the county and I do not have an opposition to it. I think it will be an advantage. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Ann Reeves, sixteen two twenty Dunn Street. I had not planned to speak tonight, but I just got through cutting my backyard. And as most of you know, our houses are quite close on the against Dunn Street. But I have no use for all this yard in the back. We have almost an acre. And it's nothing but something to grass for me to have to cut. And as all of you know, that's getting to be an issue with me. I see no advantage of all this yard I've got. Well, I have neighbors on both sides. I guess we get along fine. I have I have no objection. And so this. And so this, her acre house, to me, is not the issue that I think they are trying to, some people are trying to point out. I really could not care either way, but, um, I see no advantage for my big backyard.
They'd like to sell her alone. Subdivision may want to put a house on.
For free space?
They could have the house and make a nice big open, but nobody's taking me out. Expected compensation.
Anybody else like to speak? Y'all's concerns are a lot of concerns I brought up on, and I still got a few more on my list, but, um. The me, uh, county certainly needs houses for teachers. For some of those that are downsizing, you know, fifty-five to sixty, that, like you say, need a smaller yard. But my, you know, a big concern is, you know, somebody holding that thing down. If somebody is a bad apple, they don't mess the whole neighborhood up. Anybody else like to speak? Anybody else like to speak before I close the public hearing? There will be another public hearing for the board supervisors. And they will have a whole lot more details than we will have. Because the county will have to go through that plan, but, uh, and I'm sure from your comments comments of all the planning commission members, uh, will certainly try to do what the county at best. Concern too is the single entrance. I would like two entrances myself. And maybe, as we stated earlier, it's only like fifty-one home, max of fifty-one home. It may be when they start doing some setbacks or different things, trying to get a little more space in there. It might not be quite fifty-one. It might be forty-five or forty. And all if, talking about, you know, Martin talking about that cul-de-sac, maybe backed up on a creek. DEQ sees that that ain't going to work. I can tell you that from what my experience with DEQ. And I'm sure time you get all these agencies looking at it, things are not going to be quite as maxed out as what we've seen on the screen. Does anybody else like to speak? I don't want to cut anybody off. Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Appreciate you coming. Appreciate all your comments. And we'll certainly do our best to do what we can. This is our, our country too, our county. Uh, but you know, you get looking in the county, if only less than fifty percent is using sewer and water, that's costing everyone in this room money, whether you live on Dunn Street or not. I mean, we do need something to keep that up and this, this would probably help. Certainly get a little more, because my first concern was, do we have enough capacity? And certainly that is affected. And, uh, but, uh, but I appreciate you coming out and giving your comments. Back to the planning commission, and y'all have a comment or concern or what do you want to do?
I've got a couple of questions for the lady that's representing the group.
Emily?
Yep.
Would you come forward? Lot, lot of K C.
I'm Emily Hazlett. I'm representing Dutch Gap Gas and Grill.
One of the questions I have is, a lot of people express concern about privacy for their sales and privacy for the possible new neighbors.
Right.
And what are your planning on doing with that, about that?
Uh, there are some existing, um, you know, tree line and things, things like that, that we do want to retain. And that will ultimately become part of our site plan, once we go through the subdivision application and site development, um, process. So we just don't have all of that completely worked out yet. But as Brady already said, I know that, um, buffer requirements are inherently a part of the PCD, um, you know, designation. So we know that some of that is going to be integrated into the site plan.
Okay, um, a lot of these high-density developments down in Chesterfield places, you'll see they'll have a stone wall or a wooden decorative privacy fence separating the two neighborhoods. Would you consider something like that?
Um, that's something that we could definitely discuss. Um, I think one of the benefits of the community and the, just the way the, that it's shaped is it's almost like flagpole style. So we already have a plan to, you know, put a nice community entrance. But then you have a nice drive into the community with no lots. You know, you get past that initial, the initial homeowners who have road frontage on Dunn Street. And then you kind of open up into this cluster community of planning on, you know, landscaping along the way in. So that'll kind of create an inherent buffer, um, with the immediately adjacent, um, homeowners, property owners. And then, like I said, there will be something to address, whether it's vegetative or otherwise. We plan to address that for, um, the other perimeters of the community where it makes sense, you know?
If you put fifty-one houses, you put forty-five houses in there, that's going to be a lot of, a lot of people. These days, to save gas, as expensive as that is, people don't want to walk up to Dollar General or walk to town. What's the chance that you put sidewalks along Dunn Street to connect to the sidewalks on five forks?
I do like the idea of that.
I want the idea.
Yeah, I, I do really like the idea. Um, I, I don't have a current plan in place for that, both because we haven't done anything as far as, you know, development of site plan. But also because I know that those, that sidewalk would then affect existing property owners from, on that point two miles from there up to, um, five forks.
But the back of the side, generally when you put sidewalks in, the back of the sidewalk is on the front property line.
Okay.
This is about a plan that's recorded with this stuff here. It's a forty-foot right away. If the road itself is in the center of the right away, the child of this, if it is, that's at best twelve feet wide on each lane.
Okay.
And I doubt it's probably, probably more like eleven feet. So if you get twelve from twenty, leaves eight feet. Letting room to put in a sidewalk and maybe even add a foot or two of pavement to tie the sidewalk into the road to make the road a little wider. But it's going to be a lot of people. It's going to be kids. The road isn't there enough as it is with people. I know people are going to walk to town. If they don't do anything, get out and stroll around town. They're going to be walking. They don't need to be walking in the road, especially with the traffic that's already there and the additional traffic.
Right.
And I'll be honest with you, I'm not going to be in favor of it unless you want to put sidewalks all the way up to five forks.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that that's something that we could definitely look at and that we would like to do. The, we haven't gone through the process of actually doing any planning or design of that to know what that looks like, um, for us. But, but that's something that, yes, we would be willing to entertain. So, um, it's definitely, I mean, I understand, um, why you would want it and I, I see the purpose of it. We had also been looking for other avenues of doing a similar thing, um, within the community. But like I said, we don't have, we're at the conceptual stages. We're not at full developed site plan.
And one thing is that if you don't have a designated walking area for people, like sidewalks to move to town, I think especially kids, we'll be, we're going to be kind of doing neighbors backyards and stuff like that. It's going to be a.
Right, try and find a way. Right, I totally understand, totally understand.
Go ahead.
How would y'all feel about sidewalks? Would you be okay with sidewalks on your side?
Creates housing and meets the needs of many of the residents. Those four plans are designed with the ease of single level living in mind. Ideal for a number of buyers, including fifty-five plus residents.
Yeah.
Who are currently underserved in the median. What is provided here, uh, in these plans? The first one does, is a two-bedroom, but then, uh, there are a whole lot of three-bedrooms. Some of them very small bedrooms, second and third, and of course, four bedrooms. So if, and I understood that it was going to kind of mark toward, uh, plus fifty-five, so residents. And most people at that age are kind of, at large, their homes may be in or downsizing. And, uh, what's more appropriate is, uh, is two bedrooms, but two pretty decent bedrooms, you know? And, uh, in size. And so when I look at this, I think this, that looks to me like it's going to be more attractive to families with, with children.
So the idea right now is, um, we don't know exactly who the buyer is going to be. Uh, we don't have a plan to age restrict the community, meaning that only people of a certain age are able to purchase there. Because overall, I understand that there is a need for housing in Amelia County in general. So we have, um, an intention to build a number of different floor plans, most of which, um, include a single level, single level living in mind. That, what that means is the, um, owner's bedroom is on the main floor. You don't have to access stairs to get to your bedroom, kitchen, living room, everything is on that level. We do have a couple of other floor plans that we have, um, added and that do have the owner's suite upstairs. Reason for that being different things are attractive to different people. So we want to allow for products that are going to be, that different people will want to buy, but target, um, a community of people that need or would want, uh, first level living. The other way that we do that is through the HOA and, you know, potential like upkeep and maintenance of the community, um, smaller yard sizes, um, common areas are taken care of by the HOA, things like that, that you don't have to worry about like you would if you own, you know, a regular, um, single-family detached home.
And all of those things are important, but it seems to me the, you know, kind of the, the size of the bedrooms and the number of bedrooms is, is certainly very important for the, plus if they're.
Right, so what we're doing, we're going to be developing the lots. And then the homeowner who is going to purchase that lot for, with a home on it, they get to choose which floor plan they want. So if plenty of people who are fifty-five and up want a two-bedroom home, we have that option for them. You know, that's going to be, that's incorporated in our design. But if they happen to want a third bedroom for the grandkids or whatever, then that's also an option, whatever someone wants to use it for. We want to make sure that we have, um, something that they would want.
Go ahead.
I've got a question, um, this, both you and Brady. Brady, do most, I don't think we need private roads. What, what can we do to work to get where to take, take over these roads? We're still fighting private roads throughout the county. I can just, I don't want to add to a problem that we already have. Other, can you have, can VDOT take over roads in a PCD neighborhood?
So, you know, I would, they can. I would defer back sort of the Adams comments where Emily and her team have to, uh, to have a secondary access or to have it accepted by VDOT. VDOT stated that they would either need a secondary access or a stub correct, yep. So I think they're going to have to look at the lots that they have now on the conceptual site plan and see what maybe they can do to move the plan in that direction. And then throw that before VDOT, VDOT will give comments and then we can see. And that would allow it to access that state acceptance.
I don't know if the rules have changed or not, but it used to be if you had twenty lots or more in your subdivision, you had to have, had to have fifty-foot rightways. If you were under twenty lots, you could do forty.
These are fifty-foot rightways. They're designed, they're currently designed with the intention of them being state-accepted. So the only thing that we're working through is the secondary entrance.
Who, who owns that little bit of spot between the two lanes?
Yeah, what's, yeah, I was going to ask that too. So that just.
Are they, is it a house on it now?
It is.
Is anybody living in it now?
Yes.
Okay.
She's here.
I just thought it was maybe just sitting there with nothing on it. And they've been planning on building a house at some point in time.
No, she, she does live there currently.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just, I just want to make sure it wasn't just sitting there.
Yeah.
How long will it take before you guys figure out if you will be able to obtain your secondary entrance or VDOT to take over the roads? That is a big thing for me.
Yeah, I'm, honestly, I'm hoping that that's something that we work out over the next couple of weeks. Um, but it's, it's like a, you know, just a conversation we're having at this point to kind of work out those details.
So where are y'all thinking about trying to have the secondary?
Um, so we, we have a couple of different ideas. One would be, um, there is another piece of the property that fronts on Dunn Street as well. So it's kind of like the property, you, you see it's like a U shape where it meets Dunn Street. So we've looked at that. We do, we believe have the width there to put a second road, the, the issue being, um, the radius required where it would meet Dunn Street. Um, so the, yeah, something we're looking at.
That's about the only one y'all thinking of right now?
Yes, we have looked at a couple of other options, but given the shape of the property and, you know, one, it, it's a little bit landlocked currently, right? Um, so that, that's really what we have to work with at this point.
I know one time there was talks with maybe having a walking path or sidewalk through the southern end of DC Tire's property to five forks.
That is.
That'd be like a, even if it was just gravel or if it was a fence to keep kids out of the back of DC Tire's property, something like that.
Yeah, we do really like the idea of that, especially because it's a more direct route than say going all the way down Dunn Street with the sidewalk. So that's one reason it was something we were looking into. We don't currently have an easement for that because there's another property owner there, but it is a conversation that we have had and would be open to continuing. But we don't currently own any property or have a, a granted easement at this time.
Any more questions, Emily? Appreciate you coming on.
Thank you all.
Anybody have some questions, comments, pleasure? Ideas? I like to say that's the wrong word.
Sounds to me like they need to do a little more digging and come up with a commitment for VDOT's primary thing, which means everybody have to, have to have a secondary entrance. But David is right. I don't, I don't think we should do any more private roads in the county. I think it's just public roads.
We're now headaches now on private roads.
And I'm, I'm not going to be in favor of it unless it will, let's look some petition connectivity out to five forks.
Any more comments?
Yeah, the other thing is, uh, it's, hell, this is marketed is key because the people buy these lots and the, um, the, the size and, and type of homes, um, to be on it. And, uh, it makes a big difference if, if, if it really was, uh, marketed to attract, uh, more retirees. Because at an average of two children per home, that I think would cause an increase in your school somewhere around fifteen percent or something.
You have the comments?
What, what was the feeling of the folks that live on Dunn Street? What was y'all's feeling on the sidewalk versus the sidewalk on the backside of DC Tire? Would y'all, I mean, if it's, would y'all prefer a sidewalk on Dunn Street or prefer a sidewalk on? That would give them some direction to go. That's what I was asking.
I'm going to make y'all walk all the time.
But here's right now, anybody that wants to take a walk on Dunn Street, you go share with traffic.
Oh, yeah, and we do it all the time, but, yeah.
Sidewalk would be nice. Not safe.
I feel like if you had businessmen's cars going by, you almost don't have to eventually.
Yes.
Now, the sidewalk would only be on one side now, not on both sides, probably.
We don't need to have it on both sides on five forks. I was going to say, where, can you? I was going to say, where, can you make your backyard the road, the second entrance?
It's all in the back.
Any other comments or suggestions or the planning commission members?
They're all super men, but they're not very.
Concerns? Well, I can get a motion, either table it till, say, our next meeting to see if they can come up with the two entrances with a road and possibly the sidewalk. I know the sidewalk is an expense, but it's something I think even fifty-five of those retired will want to get out and walk. Whether they're going to town and just for exercise.
If you live in that close proximity of the village area, you're going to, you're going to walk.
Probably. It'll certainly help, probably out some businesses in the courthouse and maybe can bring a few more. But you know, we have to look too in the county, it's not many sites in the courthouse that have water and sewer.
Right.
That people don't want them in the backyard. So it's just kind of, you know, you're going to lose one way or the other. Uh, some people going to gain, some going to lose. I mean, we had departments over here on three sixty, old three sixty, it was turned down. They own sewer and water, but it didn't work for that site because of the traffic there is a different, going for a different group of people, so.
I'll make a motion that we table it to the next meeting to give them an opportunity to determine about the second entrance. Because I, I'm not going to be a favor of private streets, so you're going to have to, they're going to have to get a second entrance with VDOT. And then let them work that out with them, that'll give them thirty days or so to figure that out and discuss the possibility of sidewalks on Dunn Street. But I make a motion, we table it for thirty days to let them work some of the logistics out.
All right, you've heard the motion, I need a second before I can vote.
Second, second.
Which made it second, any more discussion on the motion?
Well, I think the, uh, the two other things mentioned that in public hearing, it's, one is the stream that probably needs to be addressed, have to be addressed. And, uh, then a lot of people, uh, had expressed concerns about, about the buffer. And so there are different, uh, types of buffers. And there are places where there are trees there that can be left. And where there's not, there are other types of buffers that can be considered. So, uh, taking a look at that would, uh, I think, uh, would, uh, a lot of people more eased about this.
Any more discussion on the motion? Any more comments? And Emily and Emily alike, we would like for them to look at, take some from the people speaking. I think they picked up on most of them, but I'm sure they'll look into them. All in favor of the motion to table till our next meeting, I don't know if that's quite thirty days one way or the other. Till we find out a little bit more on these three or four options. Uh, making numbers, any? All opposed, same side. Another question I will ask you, Emily. Person comes in and wants to buy two lots, but only puts one house on it, is that up to them too? Has that been thought about? Okay, I, I just, that's just a question, you know? Okay, I just, I just have a pop in my head of somebody like Miss Reams who would like a bigger yard or want that later on, so.
Yeah, okay, they're going to make a lot more money owning the house than they are on fifteen hundred. Fifteen thousand.
All right. Uh, any other business? Uh, I don't have any comments. And we'll certainly have this next month and maybe something else, just depends.
Yep, we, uh, comp plan committee look out for some email correspondence in terms of starting to set up meeting dates. The CRC scheduled to really kick off in September with the comp plan update. So we are going to work with the Commonwealth Regional Council. But I'm going to send out some email correspondence just to get the comp plan committee to meet so that we can at least start reviewing the old comp plan and start maybe making some priorities in terms of uh, how we'd like to address updating it or revising it.
Other thing I'll ask you, on the Zoom meeting I had with you on there, can you bring them update a little bit what they were looking for?
Sure. So the CRC, uh, is working with seven localities, um, all of them within what's called the Heartland Region. Uh, and I believe it's Amelia, um, Charlotte County, Buckingham, Cumberland, Prince Edward, Nottaway, Lunenburg. And we're looking at forming a, uh, the CRC is looking at forming a strategic plan that would help guide the region in forming a regional economic development organization. So a regional economic development organization is an organization that focuses on solely on bringing in mostly industry and commercial, uh, enterprises, industrial and commercial enterprises, India, the community to build out available industrial or commercial park land to increase jobs and overall better the development of the region. And the, right now, we have a huge leakage in terms of people who live here, but don't work here. So we are basically a, a bedroom community. And what that means when you're a bedroom community, and that's not Amelia solely, that's the Heartland Region, that's our whole region. When you're a bedroom, bedroom community, you foot the bill and you don't really get much in return because you're paying for everything that they use service wise, but they're working outside the community. So you're not reaping any of the benefits from the industry or entity that they're working for. None of the business license tax, machinery and tools tax, property value, those commercial entities. So we're not reaping any of that. So that's what this organization is, is, uh, would do, this regional economic development organization. They would represent us with the state Virginia Economic Development Partnership, VDP, um, which right now we don't have a representative. So when big companies come in from foreign nations or from other where in America and they come to Virginia to visit, VDP is the initial point of contact. They then reach out to the RITOs, the regional economic development organizations. Those reach out to the local people and they try to facilitate the leads down through that chain. Right now, we have a link in that chain as a region because we don't have that group. So that's what this process is for, to try to develop one of those.
Okay.
That's to try to develop a strategic plan that would then guide the development of one of those.
So they, they had, it was a meeting for, uh, was it six of us just from the county?
Yep, we invited, I think I invited fourteen or fifteen people and six individuals participated.
Participated in each, each of those counties. This lady was asking us all these questions. And then she, they were taking all that information from each of those counties and combining that. And then they would come back to each county, kind of answer what it was.
And we had a meeting today and there was a really, uh, fascinating presentation about the, basically the assets of the region. So the amount of industrial land, the power supply areas within the county, water treatment facilities, not within the county, sorry, within the region. It was all a regional approach. I'll try to get that presentation and send it out to you guys so you can look through it. It's very fascinating to see sort of the grid of what the region looks like. Because that's what an industry that's going to hire five hundred people, their first questions are, is what's the population? Where's the power going to come from? Where's the land? What's the, what land am I looking at? Do I need natural gas? They check all those boxes first. And we just got a presentation on that today, what our region currently has. And the Richson Road property was on the presentation. Um, so that was good for Amelia because that's our only, right now, that's our only property that's, would be available for this type of use.
All right, thank you. I don't have anything else. Appreciate everyone coming out. I'll see you next month.